All right, good afternoon. Now I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Atlantic Council to order. The first item on the agenda is adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Councillor Fox moves it. Councillor Qualley seconds it. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Next item is adoption of the minutes, regular afternoon meeting of June the 25th. Councillor Arnesson, and second by Councillor Fox. Any errors or missions? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. And I need a motion to resolve into special closed meeting for the items on the agenda and on table. Councillor Whitmarsh, seconders. Councillor Qualley. All those in favor? Opposed and carried. We now go into special closed. Now I'd like to reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Atlantic Council, and I'll just give Councillor Richter a minute. Okay, there are no presentations and there are no delegations. We go to reports to council. And F1 is a GVWD amending agreement regarding the Jericho Reservoir. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Fox, the seconder. Councillor Davis, discussion. Councillor Arnesson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I know that the, through your worship, to staff, I suppose, maybe Mr. Backen. I know the scope of the report is talking about the costs, but I'm just wondering when the size and capacity of this particular facility was last reviewed.
Mr. Seffy.
Your worship, it's reviewed on an ongoing basis, and when it was designed, it would have been based on the official community plan of the municipality is affected or being serviced.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure that there's oversight, just to make sure that we're somehow not out of sync with the amount of capacity that we need and what we budgeted for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Richter.
Yes, I had a question, well, actually, several questions about this. When did council make the decision to prepay future costs associated with the second phase of the Jericho Reservoir? Like, was that ever a discussion that council had?
Mr. Seffy, or Mr. Backen, or Ms. Sinclair? Who's gonna field that one?
Your worship, this is the term that staff is actually putting this to council for consideration. It was not previously decided upon. It is now that it's being proposed.
Okay, well, these are very significant costs. Four point one million in each of three years for a total of 12.3 million overall. And I'm just wondering, is, when this whole Jericho Reservoir was first proposed and came to council, was there a discussion then about a Phase Two? And how much of this additional cost is being driven by all the new housing units that we're bringing on, particularly just south of the Highway 1-200 street interchange?
Mr. Backen.
Mr. Seffy can provide the details, but the Jericho Reservoir goes back, oh, I guess, almost 20 years in terms of the plans. It was something the township contracted to, I guess, undertake, as I say, 20 years ago, and it was based on the official community plan predictions that were in place. This report is really about the timing of it as to certainty and when to proceed, as opposed to the, I guess, the alternative approach, which is simply to have it built and then pay it later, if you will. This is allowing us to actually start to raise revenue with a view to actually making the payments in 2023, 2024, and 2025, as opposed to having to go to external financing such as MFA, when the facility is ready, arbitrarily say 2024, and borrow at that point. So, the issue for us really is in terms of the cash flow and payments of it, and the certainty versus the having to go to borrowing at the future rates. Now, Mr. Seffy, as to the actual specifics, do you recall any more specifics as to when we entered into this? I believe it was pre-1996, but I'm not certain.
That's correct. And in terms of the, I guess, what's driving this, it's the agreement with GVWD, our agreement to be part of the region, as well as, I referenced this earlier, and so did Mr. Backen, the sizing and the design is based on the OCP, so the timing of when the actual facility is actually going to be needed is based on the projections of the growth based on the OCP. It is not being driven by the development that is beyond what was contemplated as part of the OCP.
Okay, because we're amending the OCP with some of the things that are coming forward to public hearing tonight, to take work lands out and replace them with residential lands. But I'm very concerned about putting this kind of a hamper on future councils without us having even had a staff presentation on why we're doing this, why we're prepaying. Have we done this before? Do other communities do this? What other options do we have? So, I'd like to defer this for a staff presentation. I'd make that motion.
Your seconder? Councillor Arnesson, second, so go to the deferral. So now we start to, so Councillor Davis on...
If we defer it, is there a timeline?
Is this time-sensitive, or is there time for a bit of a presentation?
It is time-sensitive, your worship. Staff note in the report that the city of Surrey has actually proceeded with the amendments necessary to their agreement to allow this to occur, in terms of the benefits with respect to protection that the imminent agreement provides, with respect to, I guess, the liabilities as to any cost escalations that might occur, being totally with the GVWD and the region as opposed to the municipality. So, there are some time sensitivities that we, I guess, note for council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Arnesson? Oh, sorry, Councillor Long, I didn't realize you finished.
Yeah, I was trying to speak before the next motion was put on, going back to the original, because this, first of all, this is coming from DCCs, so certainly developers paying some of it, and then the utility is paying the rest, is it not? Is this not money being, if we do have to do some internal borrowing, it is to pay back the utilities? So, in other words, at the end of the day, this is not coming out of general revenue? Can I get clarification from through your worship?
Your worship, that's correct, essentially, with minor contribution that is mandated through provincial legislation, that has to come from general revenue being 1%.
1%.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I don't know why we would defer it. It's all part of the plan, so to speak, and providing water is very important.
Thank you. Councillor Arnesson? Speak against it, yes.
Thank you, worship. I seconded the motion, not necessarily because I'm against doing this in a phased manner, but just because maybe some councillors, including myself, wouldn't have a good reference point. Councillor Long has brought up some interesting information. And so, I think the idea is that before we necessarily bind a future council to this, that it would perhaps be prudent to have some more consideration of alternatives, and perhaps this is the best alternative. But lacking that information, I was supportive of deferring it until such point, if we are not, in fact, impinging on any critical budget discussions. But we do have a budget coming up, and I'm not sure that this would necessarily impact that, if we were just to receive some further information about the project as a whole and options to fund it.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Well, I don't know. I've been on this council for 13 years. This is certainly not a new project to me. We've had the land for how long, Mr. Backen, through you, your worship, to Mr. Backen? We've had this land for...
As I mentioned, your worship, I'm not sure about the exact amount of land ownership, but this has been on the books for over 20 years in terms of the timeframe of it. So, the project is based in part on the OCP demands, is being predicted, it's based on the flows that are going to be needed. The payment from, is coming from development activities such as the DCC program and utilities. What I think this report was really about was trying to get the two options for funding of this, the commitment's already been made. Do we pay for it at the end by taking the risk ourselves as to the borrowing processes that may be available in 2025, 2024? Or do we begin to plan ahead and try to use our resources in terms of paying for it in a more orderly fashion? That still could necessitate some borrowing through the years, but it gives us more options in so doing. And I think that's primarily why Surrey undertook this, was to actually minimize risk and give themselves some more options, and I think that's all we're trying to do. Mr. Seffy, is that a fair financial summary of this?
Yes, it is.
So, the Jericho Reservoir, my understanding, sits on 72nd Street. Is that rated about 203? Is that correct, through you, your worship, to Mr. Seffy? Mr. Backen?
That's correct.
So, this is a critical piece of infrastructure for long-term sustainability, of water into Aldergrove, into Murrayville, and to other areas. And I can remember discussions about having the Jericho Reservoir built for that purpose. And I think that this has been on the books for a long time. It's been discussed before. It's been, there's nothing new associated with this. I think we just have to move ahead with it. If we delay this, the cost only does one thing, goes up. So, we can sit and delay it, but we can't encumber future councils because we've already committed to doing it. And this is a huge and integral part of the GVWD infrastructure for the eastern part of Metro Vancouver, in particular, our own people, our own citizens, those in Aldergrove, Murrayville, and in other areas. So, I think we have to move ahead with this schedule.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley, on the referral.
Thanks. Yeah, I think Mr. Backen pointed out the question I was going to ask, that we are already bound under contract to pay for this project. So, for me, when I was reading this report, this was staff doing financial diligence around saving money. The way I read the report now is if we agree to this three-year payout, it's 13.3 million. If we decide to pay later in future dollars, it's 24.2 million. Am I reading that correct? That perhaps through you, Mayor Froze, to Mr. Seffy or Ms. Sinclair?
Ms. Sinclair.
To Councillor Qualley, through the chair. The $24 million amount is the total project for the GVWD, and the township's share of that is 66.28%, which is the 15.9 million that we're, that the GVWD will try and build up to using our three payments of $4 million. So, we'll make those three payments. They'll invest it with their goal being to make up, over the time that we have between now and then, the 15.9 million dollars to do the project. And if it comes over, we won't have to pay any more. We would be done.
Okay, great. So, I think, you know, this is exactly how we sort of regret in future years not making this decision. And, you know, I would hope that future councils would recognize the wisdom in this decision to sort of agree to this payment structure and not be dealing with future construction dollars. So, thanks for this report. I think it's a fiscally responsible decision to make.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, this certainly doesn't encumber future councils by the decision made today. That was decided back in 1998, when we agreed to enter into this agreement from the first place. This is just simply an amendment which talks about how to save money in doing it, and the suggestion here is we might save somewhere around $2.6 million. So, it makes no sense to defer this. Instead, we should move ahead and guarantee, lock in the amount of money, save ourselves $2.6 million, and continue on doing something that's really beneficial to our community.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
So, we're going to prepay these costs 10 years before anything's actually built? Like, a lot of things can happen in 10 years.
Mr. Backen, is it prepaying, or is it putting it into reserve?
Ms. Sinclair, as I look at this, I understand it's actually putting it into a reserve for payment in 2023, 24, and 25.
Okay, but it says here on page two, "Prepay the future costs associated with the second phase of the Jericho Reservoir anticipated in the late 2030s. Timing is subject to change based on future water demand trends."
Correct. So, what we're suggesting we do is we begin to actually build up the reserves now, so that we have the funds to make the payments early, or as when they become due. If there was some issue that put the project back, which we can't foresee, then we'd still be retaining the funds, but the issue is to build up a reserve ahead of the debt becoming due, as opposed to actually funding it through a debt borrowing at a later date.
Okay, and so by the year 2037, when they're going to start building this thing, our share is still going to be 15.92 million? That's not going to change?
That's by way of the prepayment that locks it in. That's my understanding, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Backen, would this be similar? I know it's not, it wasn't a metro project, it was our project, but the East Langley Water System council had, previous councils had started a process of putting funds aside for that prior to construction. Is it sort of a similar concept here?
Our preference, it's similar as an analogy. Our preference is, when circumstances permit, is to try to, I guess, put funds away early and then pay with those funds, as opposed to borrowing later. In theory, that could work for us or against us, but in an environment of low interest rates, which we've had for some time, we think it's prudent to try to actually capitalize on those now, because in the future, we don't know. We know what's happening now, but we don't know what the future brings, so we try to capitalize on what we know.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll call a question on the referral. And the referral fails with Councillor Fox, Councillor Arnesson, Councillor Whitmarsh, Mayor Froze, Councillor Qualley, Councillor Sparrow, Councillor Davis, Councillor Long opposed. So, back to the main motion. And Councillor Long, you are next.
No, I said my part.
Councillor Qualley?
No, thanks.
Councillor Fox? Okay. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, so I'm just looking at the agreement on page five, and it says here that the requirement will be paid to GVWD as shown below. It will be in full and final satisfaction, regardless of whether the 66.28% of the actual costs incurred by GVWD in constructing and installing Phase Two is higher or lower than the requirement. GVWD and the Langley Township agree that GVWD will have no obligation to refund any amount to Langley Township if the 66.28% of the actual costs of Phase Two is less than the requirement.
And the point is...
That's what we're signing, folks.
Yeah. All right, thank you. I don't know if too many projects in the next 15 years are going to be cheaper than they are today, but I think we're, I think this is a good move from discussion I've already heard. I'm going to call the question on F1. And it carries with Councillor Richter opposed. And we move on to F2, DCC front-ending agreement, Restor Properties Limited. Kind of a motion, please. Councillor Arnesson, second by Councillor Fox. And discussion on F2. See none, I'll call the question. And it carries with Councillor Richter opposed. And correspondence. There's one item, correspondence. Could I have a motion to receive? Councillor Davis, seconder. Councillor Whitmarsh, discussion on G1. Councillor Arnesson, on receipt.
Yes, thank you, worship. While I'm happy to receive this information, I just want to comment that there's been a lot of activity, unfortunately negative, having to do with people trespassing against railway corridors recently. So, I think it's very prudent for us maybe to consider putting some further detailed information around the community. I know that this group has flyers and other relevant information that they could provide. And I also think that we should ask a representative from their group to come and speak to council regarding their overall strategies for how to improve rail safety, but I'm just in support of actually receiving their information.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Rail safety shouldn't be just for the week. It's train time all the time. Thank you.
All right, so certainly I think staff can reach out to the writer and just say if there's information they can provide to us, we could put it out even, you know, in our township pager rec centers. All right, I'll call the question on G1. Carries unanimously. Move on to minutes of committees. There's Heritage, Seniors, Council Priorities Committee, and Committee Input Group Task Force. All four are moved by Councillor Fox, second by Councillor Long, to receive all four. Councillor Richter on receipt.
I had a question about the AAEAEC's minutes from their meeting, and why they weren't included to be covered tonight, because there were recommendations from the AAEAEC coming forward to council.
The minutes aren't completed yet. They'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Call the question on receipt of the minutes. H1. Carries unanimously. And there's some action items. I'll just start off with H2, and this is Heritage Advisory Committee recommended motion, and this would be, as it is in front of you, to endorse the proposed Heritage Evaluation Framework. Could I have a mover, please? Councillor Long, and seconder. Councillor Arnesson. Councillor Long?
I was just going to make that motion. It's a terrific project, as you've all seen, the results of the work that's being done on thematic framework, so we're carrying on. That's great.
Thank you. I'll call the question on H2. Carries unanimously. Move on to H3. Now, H3 is to review the promotion composition and time of the meetings for seniors advisory committee with a view to increasing the number of members that are seniors. I would ask if council could just take this motion and refer to the new, to the next council, because I believe at that point, that council may be reviewing committees, and that would be the appropriate time to do it. So, do we need a motion to put this on the floor, then refer it, or we just refer this whole thing to the next council, if that's the...
Your worship, I think a motion simply to refer it to staff and the, for consideration during the, I guess, council orientation sessions would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Long will move that. Is there a seconder to that? Councillor Fox? And discussion on that. Councillor Qualley?
Thanks. The committee just asked me to add a comment to this, that, you know, the committee this year had really low attendance. We had difficulty meeting quorum and had to cancel a significant number of meetings. And the committee felt like one of the contributing factors is that the meetings are held at night. And so, they'd like to maybe consider having meetings held at a different time. So, that was the rationale, I think, for some of this comment, that it might attract more people to be interested in the committee if they weren't held in the evening.
And staff can make note of that for the report. Thank you. Councillor Long?
Just to clarify, that's what I got from the minutes. So, they're looking at maybe afternoons or something like that, right? Is that the idea? Okay.
Great, thank you. Solid call a question on H3 on the referral. Carries unanimously. Move on to H4, Seniors Advisory Committee recommended motion to recognize long-range planning and economic investment development departments. Kind of a motion, please. Councillor Arnesson, second by Councillor Qualley. Discussion on H4. See none, I'll call, oops, sorry, Councillor Qualley. No, you're okay? Okay, H4, I'll call the question. Carries unanimously. And H5 is Council Priorities Committee recommended motion that council endorsed introduced senior zoning bylaw amendment, providing for maximum 50% single-car tandem parking units permitted per townhouse development. Councillor Qualley moves it. Councillor Whitmarsh seconds it. Discussion, Councillor Long?
Your worship, I'm going to be definitely not supporting this. I think we need to really think about what the future needs are in terms of housing. We hear it all the time, how important it is to provide affordable housing. There are choices out there for people to make. I don't, I really appreciated the presentation and the discussion. I take some exception to the motion to begin with, because it says that there's huge amounts of problems as a result of, and maybe there are some challenges, as there are in result of any development. But for us, just to cut it, I don't think it's the right move. In fact, it's the opposite move, I would think, that we would be making. We should be thinking more forwardly about less dependency on the automobile and more variety of types of housing, mixing of housing, and giving people choices. So, I don't think it's required, and I'm just not going to support it. I think it's the wrong direction to move.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge staff's work in making their presentation. I think they brought up some points which I thought were very valuable in terms of my own thinking about tandem parking and how it works, and how it affects housing price and so on and so forth. There's a definite equation in there that I think has a great deal of merit, and understanding that was very valuable. Part of the reason parking has always been a bit of an issue, and I have to applaud staff, because they have changed their parking standards and expectation through the varying different phases of evolvement of Willoughby, and it's certainly much better now. We don't hear quite the same number of complaints about some of the newer areas of, because we have gone to larger parking requirements, better street parking, et cetera, et cetera. At this point in time, I'll support the motion, but it may be something again that has to be revisited, only simply because as we see projects come on board, and we have one tonight, Quadra, for example, up at 86th and 204th, which is right beside the Carvalt Bus Exchange. And hopefully, the people that will move in there, and Quadra does an excellent product, I know that the whole project is oriented towards the fact that this is a walkable, easily accessible, transit-oriented community. So, I'm hoping that, you know, the things like tandem parking can have value in that situation, because hopefully only one person will need a car. And so, you know, we can see that evolution. I know there's other projects coming along in that area, all of which have that similar sort of transit-oriented context to them. So, I will support the motion, but I think that as we see parking issues evolve, we do change standards, and this is just another, I guess, another increment along that journey.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Thanks, yeah. I also want to thank staff. I think it's important that we're constantly sort of reviewing our bylaws and adjusting our recommendations based on what we know and sort of current best practices. And staff sort of outlined those in the presentation they gave to council. I think this bylaw change sets a minimum expectations, or a minimum expectation. Developers can, as they do almost every single week, apply for variances based on proximity to transit and other transportation amenities and options here in the community. Then, based on the rationale for that specific development, council can make a decision to vary those requirements or not. So, I think this is a really great proactive step in bylaw review, and I think, like I said, it's a really good minimum standard, and I'm not opposed entirely to tandem parking where it makes sense, where there is access, perhaps one data, car sharing or car pooling and to transit. But unfortunately, with the current state of transit in the township, it's not going to make sense everywhere. So, I'm really thankful for the work that went into this, and I'm excited about the opportunity to improve what we've been doing.
Thank you. Councillor Arnesson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I agree with my council colleagues. I think it was very helpful to hear from staff, and they presented a really balanced, I thought, approach, and looked at other communities, and gave us a lot of really relevant details about what we need to consider. My most pressing consideration, amongst other things, was about the affordability. And I think that this approach really strikes the right balance between offering options for people, because you could live in a similar complex, and the relative affordability would be affected by the fact that you actually have a tandem driveway as opposed to a double. So, I know that there is a cost for this, and it is, I think TransLink said about 10% of the house cost was having to do with parking because of land values. And I agree with council. Any subsequent council should and probably will review this. They can either do it in a holistic way, or they can do it on a piecemeal basis as different applications and variances coming forward. So, that gives us a lot of flexibility to determine, based on different situations, whether or not we find this to be the appropriate balance, or if we'd like to change it up at any time.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
I am with Bob Long. I'm not going to support this, but I'm not supporting it simply because I still think 50% is too high.
Thank you. Councillor Sparrow?
Well, I think I agree with most of the comments that have been made here. I think this is about balance, and it's about providing options for residents. I don't think banning tandem parking outright in our community is the right choice. I think we need to be cautious of what that would do to affordability, how that would affect the market, and the options that some buyers are looking for. So, I think this is, you know, addressing some of the concerns and the issues that sometimes do come with tandem parking, but also being understanding of the fact that we can't just not allow that within our community. And like was said, I think we can deal with it on a case-by-case basis. If we did have a development come in front of us that was, had made a good case for why they needed to have that percentage adjusted, that's certainly something that, as Councillor Qualley said, we do almost every night, where we make changes. So, I'm going to support this as a starting point, and hope that we will, or future councils will, will review it in the future and make sure that it's working. will review it in the, in the future, and make sure that it's working.
Okay, thank you. No further discussion. I'll call the question for H5. And the motion carries with Counsel Richter and Counsel Long opposed. Move on to H6. And this is the Community Input Group Task Force Recommended Motion, that their recommendations be forwarded to November 26, 2018 Council Workshop. Motion, Counsel, Counsel Arnison moves, Counsel Whitmarsh seconds, Counsel Richter.
Okay. First of all, there was no motion that this be done at the meeting that we had on June 28. So, I'm wondering why we're voting on a recommendation that didn't come from the committee. I don't think that's appropriate. It should have come from the committee. Second of all, the committee does have a chair, and in the past, when a committee finishes up their work or a project they're working on, they are given the opportunity for the chair to come and address counsel and share, share the findings of the group with all of counsel. And not all of counsel is able to attend all of the meetings. I know I missed the first one. So, having an overview presentation, I think, could be helpful for counsel. And third of all, you know, I'm sure there are many people in the community who will be running for counsel in the fall, who might like to know what conclusions the committee came to. So, I'd like to amend this, to add that the chair of the Community Input Group Task Force be invited to make a presentation to counsel about the findings of the task force.
Okay, so I add those words to it. Is there a second to the amendment? Counsel Arnison, seconds. Counsel Arnison seconded, so certainly, I think that's a great idea, ask the chair to come and speak to this. So, we could certainly, sorry?
That would be at the, in November, I take it, your worship?
No, no, before the election.
Okay.
Prior to, so July 23, the chair could, would we say July 23? Is there a time on the agenda? If it works for the chair, we'd have to.
It's a presentation, so we'll see what her schedule puts.
Sure, sure. Sounds good, thank you. So, and Counsel Long?
Yeah, boy, am I confused here. First of all, there are no recommendations that I, have I lost the sheet somewhere here? Is there a list of recommendations? Because I see minutes from the last meeting, which simply talks about what we discussed.
There's a whole list of...
Oh, list of topics that were discussed, but there was no recommendations. So, I found it difficult to say, yeah, let's refer something we haven't seen yet.
So, I think with this presentation, it may be helpful.
Your worship, just to clarify, what's being referred is what you've seen. The challenge, or the opportunity, is that the decision of the task force was to list their, their recommendations, if you will, or their comments, as in the format you have. Rather than attempt to try to cull out the recommendations or interpret them, we've simply suggested they be provided to counsel at the appropriate time, which was hence November. So, I was going to suggest that perhaps it would also be prudent then to have the chair not only appear at the July 23 meeting, but also when counsel considers these, so there can be an element of interpretation that goes along with them.
Do we need that added to the motion?
It's at the will of counsel, your worship.
Okay, so if there's, with unanimous consent of counsel, I'd add that the chair would be invited to the November 26 also.
November 26?
Well, in addition to coming to a, to a future council meeting of this council, to come to the November 26 to give a background and to the recommendations. So, that's, so if that's not going to be... Yeah, that's right. So, with unanimous consent, we'll accept that amendment? Okay. So, back to the amendment. I will call the question on the amendment, as amended. It carries unanimously. So, now the main motion as amended. Counselor Long, did you wish to speak to that?
Okay, so the motion now says that there's going to be a presentation to this counsel soon.
Yes.
And then that we're also recommending that there be a present, shouldn't we see that presentation first, and then decide whether that's going to be referred to November 26, or?
Oh, we've already, yeah.
I mean, who knows? The chair could be running.
Well, then we'll, then that council will have to make a decision. But I think it's to...
I just don't think we should...
Provide some continuity.
I would, I support the chair coming to this counsel in a couple of weeks. I think we should eliminate the November thing until we've actually seen something, first of all, and then decide from that point. That's my feeling.
Okay, so I'll call the question then on H6 as amended.
I move that we strike the November 26.
So, you're making an amendment, then?
Yeah.
Which we just had amended.
So, we've amended to add July 23?
Well, or a future council meeting, because it depends on scheduling.
But before, before the...
Yeah, before the election.
Your worship, our challenge is that this work was intended certainly to be reported out to this counsel, but it's really for the benefit of a future counsel. So, regardless of what's actually said at the next meeting, it's really the property of a future counsel to interpret when they set their next priorities. And so, I was suggested for November.
Okay, so, your worship, I agree with that, but I don't necessarily think it would be the chair that would present it. Probably Mr. McIntosh would be the one to present to the future counsel.
He was quite adamant, your worship. These are not his priorities, or the priorities of the task force itself, so it has to come from the task force, whoever that may be.
Okay, so...
Then why don't we change it to the task force, rather than saying the chair? We don't know if she'll be the chair.
Well, she, she's the, she is the chair, she was the chair. The task force is over, so she will always be the chair of that task force. So, if she can't make it, then I think the council would understand that, and we'd have a present, we'd ask for a presentation from staff. So, where are we right now? I don't think we have, did you want to put a motion on to strike the November?
Oh, no, that's fine. I understand that there needs to be something presented in November 26. I just have an issue with how it's been worded, I guess, but work it out.
Thank you. Counsel Davis?
Okay. I'm concerned that we're going to, we're going to view it, and we don't want to muck with it too much. I don't think we want to muck with it at all. Is that right? It's just going to come to us, we're, she's going to give us a, talk about it? And then, if, because if we start mucking with it, that's no good. The task force is their property, right? So, so why?
So, she'll, so I think the intention here is that the chair will come to this counsel, present the findings to this counsel for our receipt.
Yep.
And which, and then, in November 26, the counsel will have an opportunity to also hear about that and see the report, and they will determine what they want to do with it.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so, is that what we're supporting, but, okay?
I believe that's the intention, and that's the way it's worded. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, and I think it's probably important that we hear from the chair, because as I recall, there were like 50-odd items that were generated in meeting two. But I think between meeting two and meeting three, they maybe only dealt with half those items. So, there's still items that came up that weren't necessarily dealt with.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the question then to the motion as amended, H6. It carries unanimously. And move on to other business. And Counsel Richter, your mic is on, so you can provide your...
Okay. So, whereas there are no current restrictions on the amount of fill that can be brought on to lots that are subject of a development application, other than ensuring drainage impacts have been adequately addressed, primarily in infill areas of single-family homes. And whereas the lack of restriction on fill affects the elevation of infill homes to the possible detriment of surrounding properties, therefore be it resolved that counsel directs staff to bring forward amendments to the Subdivision and Development Servicing Bylaw 2011, Number 4861, to prevent excessive fill from being placed on new development lots that affect the elevation and drainage of those lots and the surrounding area. I so move.
There's a second. Counsel Arnison, second. I would, I've reviewed this much, too sure, you know, by looking at this motion exactly what it is. I would prefer that we refer this to staff to come back with a report, because I'm under the impression that there are some things that are being done already, although I think before we give them a direction, I would like to get a report from staff. So, I don't know if a member of counsel would like to move that. Counsel, yeah, Counsel Long moved, Counsel Whitmarsh seconded. So, to refer to staff for a report back on this motion would be helpful. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. In fact, it was in discussions with staff that this particular idea came out. And it would be good if they reviewed it. I think the issue that we're seeing now is there's nothing restricting the amount of fill that can come in. We've run into this situation with Lentera, because they brought a lot of fill in and raised the level of the houses in their little development four feet higher than all the other houses around them. I've even seen it in my neighborhood, where an old house was bought and torn down, and they've put the foundation in for the new house, and the foundation of the new house is now four feet above all the other houses. So, I'm wondering what's going to happen to the neighbors immediately around that house. And I think what we need to do is particularly in these infill areas, respecting the character of the existing neighborhood, so that someone's not going to come in and do something that will end up in like titigous relationships between neighbors, because they've been allowed to do something that negatively impacts the neighbors, and it becomes in a fight between the neighbors. So, yeah, I'm in agreement. Send it to staff. I'd like to see what specific suggestions we have to prevent this from happening.
Thank you. Counsel Fox?
Well, I just find it interesting that one situation, now we go back to a whole bylaw, development servicing bylaw, and we change it, because I visited this, and I certainly, I didn't take my laser level with me, but I certainly didn't see a four-foot differentiation on a final, a final product. I concur that fill had been brought in. I don't concur that it was four feet higher in the final building envelope. And in discussing this with staff, they said it's a long way from being finished. So, I just don't want to, you know, put the cart before the horse here, just because of one situation, we now change something. I mean, that has been in existence for a long time, without a really solid rationale for doing it. You know, the end result of the Lentera development is going to obviously be there, but it's not, we're not at the end result. We're not even at, have they, maybe through you, your worship, to Mr. Seffy, have they even started digging basements, or leveling the final, final level for that? Seffy?
Not to our knowledge, your worship. The, the servicing for the, for the project is yet to be completed. So, all of those things are yet to be done, yeah.
So, the servicing isn't completed. So, how many hours last weekend were spent by staff trying to deal with this situation? You know, to, at a cost involved? Maybe through you, to Mr. Seffy?
Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, I haven't, I guess, tallied up the amount of hours spent, but the question, I guess, was specifically to do with the past weekend. Staff were, were at the site on Friday evening to assess the situation based on concerns that were raised. So, I would imagine a couple of hours by, by staff, and that doesn't include myself.
Well, well, yeah, and your time's, your time's pretty, pretty valuable. But my point is, we're not finished the servicing piece of this, so we don't know what the final elevation's going to be relative to the neighbors next door. We have preloading that happens in some areas for various different reasons. There's a variety of different construction and techniques that are involved. But our present bylaw ensures that drainage will, from one property, the new property, will not impact the second property. And that's a really important piece. So, I think that, okay, get a report from staff. It's going to be more staff time on a project that's not even begun to be finished yet, and the final grade hasn't been established yet. So, I think that if we're doing this to try and save Lentera, we're doing it for the wrong reasons. I think we need to, to have far more legitimate reasons than that one, and I can't support it.
Thank you. Counsel Arnison?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I do support this going to staff. I don't particularize this really having to do with one particular development proposal. I think it has to do with general principles about, in the event that we are looking at infill in an environment where we have currently existing subdivisions, I do think it's prudent to look at what would be the maximum allowable. You know, what is the height limit of imported fill? Is there one? And if we don't have one, I think that we are kind of asking for trouble, because in fact, I understand Counselor Fox's point. We're saying, well, we as the township are more or less guaranteeing through our engineering processes and stormwater management that that can't happen. But I don't want to leave residents in the situation where it can be very, very difficult after the fact, if there's a rain event, and in the event, somebody gets flooded, how do you go forward in a civil action to try and get damages when there's so many different individuals who are involved? If we had a system where somebody would sign off and say, I am writing, our qualified professional or staff is writing, I am guaranteeing you're not going to have any problem, that would give some comfort to the residents. And I understand Lentera, if we're going to be specific, is a work in progress. But I do see, I'm starting to recognize that not all development proposals could really go forward in a way that we know with a certainty about what the maximum height is going to be. And I think that's a problem. And if, in fact, perhaps the topography makes it necessary that you have to put in extra fill, but does that mean that you could have virtually another story of height added on to the whole building, if that were the case? So, I'm in favor of sending it back to staff, because I do think we need to explore these issues. Because if we don't do that, there will be cases, I believe, in which a bungalow could sit next to a new infill house that's four stories tall, because they have these inconsistencies, and they've had to work from a servicing point of view around it. So, I would like more certainty there.
Mr. Seffy, can you provide some comments, or just some clarification on that?
Thank you, your worship. The clarification, I guess, that I would provide is that there are currently, in terms of our subdivision and development servicing bylaw, as well as our procedural requirements, the need for a qualified professional to sign off and take responsibility for all the works and services. So, we take that, even though there's a process in terms of staff reviewing the submissions of qualified professionals, they are required, in fact, to sign off and accept responsibility. So, even though it's not a guarantee that nothing is actually going to go wrong, there is a responsibility that is actually attached with every submission that is made, and every project that is accepted to proceed to construction. And I guess in terms of the actual language of the bylaw, even though there are no restrictions currently, the physical, I guess, conditions of any given site dictate how much can be actually brought onto the site. And as referenced in the, the, whereas part of the motion that was brought forward by Counsel Richter, there are requirements for not only best practices by the engineer of record, but also there is a requirement for drainage issues to be addressed as part of the process. So, just a couple of points of clarification.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for those points, Mr. Seffy. I think that's sort of what I was understanding. I mean, I'm not going to support this, because I think the by, the motion assumes that changes are necessary, and that there should be amendments made. And excessive is subjective to each different application, would be totally different. And all of those are managed through, like Mr. Seffy said, through the qualified professionals that are signing off on these. So, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what needs to come forward, because the, the motion says bring forward amendments. I'm, I just, I, I'm not clear on what those amendments would, would need to be. I'm not going to presume we need amendments. I think if the subdivision and servicing bylaw wasn't working, staff would bring forward those amendments. And I think they're dealing with them on a case-by-case basis, like Counsel Fox said.
Thank you. Counsel Davis?
Thank you. I just, I think where this is coming from, I think that there's a little bit of history here, and we've been worried about heights. And Mr. Nagy, I know Counsel Richter put a motion in to restrict a house along there as a rancher, and it failed. Then, there was the opportunity for him to buy the piece of property, so that he couldn't, he wouldn't be dwarfed. Then, there was the problem of turning the house, the developer, if you turn the house and, and exit it on the road, I think you could go five feet. Anyhow, there's, there's a series of problems. And now, now the fill has been brought in, and I had a site visit, and it looked like... And I think the whole concern is, this is an individual problem that could have been solved if, on two or three steps, and now we're, now we're here. So, that's why I believe that we have this here. And I, it does affect a lot of...
So that's why I, I believe that we have this here, and I, it does affect a lot of buildings, no matter where, when they put their final, final grade in, and it, and, and to have it higher, it can affect other properties. So, you know, I'm, I, I know why this is here, and it's too bad that we couldn't solve this. This couldn't have been solved by letting them buy the piece of property, or, you know, making other plans for it. A house that could go thirty-three feet high or even higher than that, right beside his house, and I guess, you know, anyhow, I, just some thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, no, this is not just about Lintera. I think that, that this is a trend that's happening out there, and as, again, I'll go to my neighborhood. Two years ago, a small bungalow was bought and torn down, and a great big, big family home was built, but it was at the same level as the road. Now, fast forward two years later, same situation, a small bungalows bought, torn down, but it's no longer at the level of the road. So I guess the question that I have is, why would we be allowing people to build higher than the level of the road? And do we have any restrictions in any of our bylaws? It doesn't come through when the rezoning bylaw comes through. There's no restriction in that that says you have to put it at the level of the road. The logical place to say it should be at the level of the road is in the subdivision and, and servicing bylaw, and my understanding is, there's nothing in that bylaw. And it may have something to do with people wanting to build these big in-ground basements, but they want the basements maybe not totally in-ground, they want them partially above-ground, like, I don't know. But I, I do think that this is something that staff should maybe have a closer look at and, and bring us some recommendations, which is why I'm supporting the deferral for a staff report.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Thank you, your worship. I'm still in support of the deferral, but I did have, through your worship, perhaps to Mr. Bakken, a question arising from Mr. Seifi's comments about professional reliance. I do have a concern that if the statute of limitations is running on some kind of damages that are discovered, and how it is in a civil matter that somebody could potentially, five or ten years or even twenty years down the road, seek recovery for their damages after such a long period, when in fact, probably many of those entities are no longer there. I wondered if we have such a thing as a surety bond or something that could protect those financial interests in those, in those areas.
Your worship, speaking generally, the limitation period would begin to run from the time the negligent event was learned about, so not from when the activity took place, but from when knowledge came into effect. So in the example that there was a engineer that certified something, and five years later there was a flood, it would be from the five-year period, after the five years had run, that the limitation period would start, because it's from the time that the negligent act became known. In that circumstance, then if the engineering company was no longer in existence, the insurance company that was in place actually at the time of the proffering of the opinion, even though maybe five years earlier, would still have a liability, and that should be built into their, their, their claims record. They should be maintaining a reserve for those claims themselves. So generally speaking, subject to some exceptions that may exist because of special contractual relationships, the recovery mechanism should still exist.
Hang on.
Okay. I'm reminded.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Long?
Just to be clear, your worship, then, we are referring this, not deferring it, referring it to staff?
This motion to refer to staff.
For a report to come back on the state of the, of the situation, right?
Yeah, yeah, more information, yeah. Thank you. Okay, up for the discussion. You know what, I felt a report from staff would be helpful, but I think staff have been very good, Mr. Seifi, Mr. Bakken, in explaining the situation here. So, you know, I, I believe the subdivision and development service bylaw, and there's, there are safeguards in place that protect neighboring properties, so I feel I've had enough information, and, and I think we can move straight to the motion. I'm, I'm not gonna support the referral. And with that, I'll call the question on the referral. And the referral carries with Counselor Fox, Counselor Whitmarsh, Marfose, Counselor Qualley opposed, and is there any other business?
Oh, yes.
Counselor, oops, here, I'm gonna clear this whole queue, we can start over again. Okay. Counselor Richter?
All right. I have two notices of motion, and an item I'd just like to bring up for staff's attention. My first notice of motion, whereas the current trend towards the installation of numerous under-eve potlights on new homes can be very intrusive to neighbors, especially in rural and suburban residential areas, as these lights can affect privacy and contribute to unnecessary light pollution, therefore be it resolved that this matter be referred to staff for a report and recommendations on how the excessive use of under-eve potlights can be regulated as part of the building permits process. My second notice of motion is, whereas apparently election signs for the 2018 municipal election can be erected starting September fourth, 2018, whereas the nomination period for the 2018 municipal election does not close until four P.M. on Friday, September fourteenth, 2018, whereas this council has made changes to the election signs bylaw as a result of the 2014 municipal election, whereas candidates declaring early for the 2018 election would have a definite advantage in sign placement over those candidates declaring later in the nomination period, and this is not fair, and whereas seven weeks from September fourth, 2018, to October twentieth, 2018, of election signs is a much longer period of time for this community to experience election signs compared to past municipal elections, therefore be it resolved that staff bring forward the necessary bylaw changes to restrict the election of, or the erection of election signs until after the nomination period has closed, or September fifteenth, 2018, in the case of the 2018 municipal election.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. I just, if I can, I just have a question for staff. What is the, I thought it was twenty days or, or three weeks or so before the election signs went up. Has it been changed? I didn't realize that.
It was changed in the election sign bylaw that was adopted shortly after the last election.
To go to September fourth? Okay, I didn't realize. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, so basically, whoever hands their papers in first gets the best sign spots, and that's, I don't think is fair. The thing I wanted to bring up with staff, and this goes back to letters we've received in the past from Greyhound, but in a, an article in the Langley Times today, Greyhound Canada says it is ending its passenger bus and freight services in Alberta, Saskatchewan, and Manitoba, and canceling all but one route in B.C., which is the U.S.-run service between Vancouver and Seattle, and these changes will take place at the end of October. I guess the question I would have to staff is, is this going to have major ramifications for our community? I know in the past, the Greyhound has written to us on several times, asking if they could move their terminal out of Langley City and put it up into, I think it wanted it more on Highway One, so I guess that would be a cost-saving measure to it. And I'm wondering if there's a need for us to connect with other communities to see if they're upset about the loss of this service? I think it's gonna be very detrimental to younger people and people on fixed incomes that might rely on bus service to get from one point in B.C. to another point.
Mr. Bakken?
Your worship, it is a developing story. We just read the news itself. It appears it's based primarily on Greyhound's, I guess, financial status. Since 2010, they've seen a forty-one percent decline in ridership, and that's causing some other issues. I don't know about their parcel service, that seems to be something that we thought was doing relatively well, but apparently not, because it's also being closed down. So it's, it's one of those things that will certainly leave a challenge or a hole in the transportation market. The news release also references that there's challenges as they're being faced, they're facing competition from other, other forms of transportation that are somewhat subsidized. So all those things, though, certainly will have an impact on some communities that don't have those other alternatives. We can certainly try to get more information, I guess, in terms of what their financial situation was, or if there's any profitable routes in the township, but it seems to be driven by the lack of profitability. That's gonna be a, a challenge for someone else to pick up and replace if it isn't in fact profitable.
Because it's a private business.
Yeah, well, and if it is a business decision, because it can't make money, how are we gonna fill that gap? Does this increase the need for us to approve rideshare options? Like, I'm, I'm just wondering if our staff have heard anything. The provincial government, I would think, would surely be invested in this in some way.
Your worship, we haven't heard anything, and I'm not sure the provincial government would be, in terms of their operating B.C. transit, which is actually gonna be services within various communities outside of Metro Vancouver. The Greyhound service is very much more of a, more relevant in terms of a long-haul service between the various communities themselves, where they may not have been something, and that's where the impact will be most greatly felt. We can perhaps try to just to communicate with Greyhound to see about the long-haul routes from Langley, what the implications were in terms of which ones were working, which ones weren't, just for information purposes.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to follow up with staff and thank them very much for item sixteen in the correspondence, particularly the engineering division, who has outlined their efforts to work with Arosia, because the Western Toad Crossing and migration, the toadlets are apparently springing to life. And I was actually on global news the other day, I wasn't the main feature, but I was just talking about the efforts that we could take, so I'm very pleased that we are going to do that. And I'm not sure what the timeliness is, but I know it says that you're going to be working, the township will be, with Arosia, to make sure that some of the advisory signage and warnings will be put in place in lieu of closing the roads, so that motorists will be aware of the migration. So thank you, staff.
Counsel Fox?
Yeah, I'm just, I wanna go back here. So what, what was the request to do with Greyhound of staff? What?
It was just a.
Are staff spending time looking at a Greyhound issue?
No, no, there was, Counsel, I, I understand, Counselor Richter asked some questions, staff have responded to it. There's been no request made that I could see was more of, is that correct, Mr. Bakken? It's just more of a discussion here.
I think from that discussion, we'll actually try to communicate with Greyhound to see about the profitability, if they, if they'll tell us about their routes from Langley, which ones worked, which ones didn't, but that's as far as I'm aware.
Okay, so it's just a.
Okay, because, I mean, if anybody travels this province, you see a Greyhound bus with a little trailer behind, that's what they're cutting out. And you've got so many other delivery companies that are now, you know, FedEx, Curallator, they all drop by my place, delivering their packages, Amazon, using Canada Post, et cetera. So I just, I don't wanna spend a lot of staff time on this.
Because I've heard two things now.
Passenger and?
I understand the passenger service is being discontinued as well, so the packages are gone, but also the passengers.
Okay, so a quick question would be helpful. Okay, thank you. Counsel Richter, another?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make it clear, my concern is about passenger service. I think there are other options for parcel delivery, absolutely, but it's, it's people needing to get to other communities in this province, and I don't see this as a strictly Langley problem, I think it's a B.C. problem, but is there anything we could go, that we could do that might be able to help get the ball rolling for the provincial government to do something?
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business? Motion terminated. Counselor Davis, seconder. You seconder all at once? Oh, Counselor Whitmarsh, all those in favor? Posed, carried. Thank you.